Good evening. Tonight is June 10th, 2025, and I will call to order the public hearing for the purpose of the annual tax budget hearing. So, Mr. Keon, if you would come up. Podium.
Yes, good evening. As we do every June or July, this is to discuss the tax budget for the next calendar year, so in this case, 2026. This is kind of our very first blush at what a budget might look like. So, the numbers included in this resolution are sort of, you know, just being dialed in. We'll take a much deeper dive into the 2026 budget in August, September, October, when we kind of go full bore into that process. So, the first exhibit is the general fund revenue, and it has kind of a look back of 23, 24, what we estimate for the current 2025 and the 2026. Exhibit two goes into general fund expenses by department. You're presenting a balanced tax budget, just like we present a balanced budget. Exhibit three goes into the other funds, the special revenue funds, the capital funds, the debt funds, and has a breakout of those items. And then there's a network sheet in the back. So, really, the principle of this, I've kind of said this in some past years, is if you are a community that are struggling and your tax budget doesn't get you to a good place, we're a positive fund balance, the county auditor would put a levy on the ballot for you for November. So, that is kind of the basic, it's a very archaic code section. But that's the basis of that code section. There is, on a related note, there's a lot of stuff in the current state legislature about fund balances and fund balance reserves and what that will do to tax levies. As we said, and this is kind of what this goes, we don't have a tax levy, and we don't have our inside milage. This is the first step on that. So, this process may evolve here in the future if they are successful in getting that bill passed, and a lot of other entities would be impacted and really talk a whole lot about what their reserves are and what that would mean for their milage in the next year. So, we don't have to get into that, but it's a big topic out there for a lot of other governments. Any questions?
All right. Seeing none, thank you. This time, are there any questions or comments from the audience? Civics class questions regarding, no? Okay.
They're all graduating.
They're all graduating. They don't care. Got it. Been there, done that. All right. At this time, I will close the public hearing, and at this time, I will call to order the regular meeting of City Council for the City of Sharonville on June 10th, 2025. If you could all please stand and join Councilman David Cook for a prayer, a moment of silence, and pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Ms. Buhaite, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Tankersley?
Here.
Mrs. Sharpsher?
Mr. Cook?
Here.
Mr. Lovett?
Here.
Mr. Cox?
Here.
Mrs. Knight?
Here.
And Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Thank you. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes of our last meeting? Seeing none, the minutes will stand approved as written and distributed. Reports and communications, Mayor Hardman.
First of all, just a quick business item. Our mayor's court revenue for May of 2025 came in at $28,209. Year-to-date brings us to $109,505, which is slightly ahead of last year's year-to-date by about $5,000. The full report will be on file with the clerk as part of your minutes. With that said, let's have some more fun. It is always a pleasure. This is one of my favorite nights of the year to recognize our graduating seniors from the Sharonville community who have excelled in one way or the other. And so, we want to take a few moments. First of all, if you haven't got it yet, I don't think it's gotten out. It's been mailed, though, right? But our summer hometown guide will have this beautiful two-page spread, as always, highlighting some of these great seniors that are here tonight, as well as many others who couldn't make it and join us. But, Mr. Coulter, if you would join me up front. We want to celebrate a few of these young folks who are really making a difference currently, and we know will make a difference in the future as well, wherever that takes them. First of all, Ray Huffman, Ray, come on up. Ray is a graduate of Roger Bacon High School. He will be going to Northern Kentucky University next year. He is a past Cappy winner for the best male vocal in a musical. He also won the National Choral Award and the National Souza Award for Band at Roger Bacon High School. Congratulations. Thanks for all of your great work. Stay right up here. Go off to that side. We'll have a whole big row of people here when we're done. Nick Wickler. Nick is a graduate of Cincinnati Hills Christian Academy. He graduated the top 5% of his class. He'll be a recipient of Ohio's Governor's Merit Scholarship. He is a past Sharonville Shark swimmer. He's got a few other accomplishments I saw on here, Southwest Classic Swim Meet Scholarship, OSU Maximus Scholarship. So, he must be going to the Ohio State University. Is that true? Congratulations, Dick. Reagan Robinson. Reagan, come on up. Reagan is also a graduate of Cincinnati Hills Christian Academy. She will be attending the Ohio State University this year on a Full Ride Morrell Scholarship. Lengthy, I know all about the scholarship. It's a lengthy interview process. It's a very select few that get it. It is quite an honor. Congratulations to you, Reagan. Very proud of you. Thank you. All right. Now, we get to the top 20 in Princeton's graduating class, and I am proud to say once again, eight of them, of all the communities that make up the Princeton City School District, eight of the top 20 came from right here in Sharonville. Some of them have so many other commitments, they couldn't be with us because they're so involved. But I'm going to read all their names anyway. I know Caitlin Tracy in our Princeton High School Top 20. She's working tonight. She's going to be going to Ohio University, also a Sharonville Shark by Sharpsher proxy, apparently, is what I see here. Lilly Ogelson. Lilly graduated in the top 20 of Princeton High School's graduating class, and will be going to Ohio University this fall. Congratulations. Thank you, Lilly. Jennifer Mendoza will be attending the Ohio State University, also top 20 of the Princeton High School class. Connor Assari will be going to the Ohio State University, also in the top 20 of his class. Another past, this was a note on everybody's, that was a past Sharonville Shark swimmer. I don't know why that is. Somebody got in your ear, Anna, I think. Another past Sharonville Shark swimmer, top 20 of his class. Josh Williams will be attending the University of Cincinnati this year. Congratulations. Scott Lawson is in the top 20 of his Princeton class. Will be going to Purdue University. He was actually number three in the 2025 graduating class. We have one, two, and three this year, everybody. One, two, and three, Sharonville residents. And five, well, and, they're all in the top 20. So, one, two, three, five. Where was four? Anyway, it doesn't matter. All right. Number two, salutatorian, Charlie Robinalt will be going to the Ohio State University in the fall. Congratulations, Charlie. And the valedictorian, who will also be going to the Ohio State University this year with so many scholarships, he's got a full ride, Alok Patel. So, Alok? Alak. Alok Patel. Thank you. So, congratulations to him. Congratulations to all these fine young folks. Move over this way, everybody. Let's center you up right here. All right. Mr. Coulter is okay with it, because he's the boss. We're going to take a quick five minutes. We've got some cookies you all can eat. It's a small tray, so I'm sure they'll go really fast. Take pictures with all your family members in front of the great seal. We're proud of all you guys. It's really, like I said, this is a special night. It's always great to recognize the great accomplishments that you've got. Hopefully, that you've found that living in Sharonville has helped make that a possibility and all the things that are available for you here. So, congratulations, all of you. So, pleasure.
One thing before the legislation. For those who may not be aware, Third Eye Brewing Company is celebrating their five-year anniversary this Saturday, June 14th. They're going to have some new releases and other specials. For those who like stouts like I do, they are having a, their anniversary bottle release is an Imperial Stout with raspberry, maple, cinnamon, vanilla, and hand-soasted coconut. They're also going to have a baklava-inspired Imperial Stout and something called Mounds of Importance, which is a coconut chocolate stout. Some food specials, and then also two bands playing, one from two to five, and then the other from seven to 10. So, if you can make it out to Third Eye Brewing on Saturday, celebrate with them. I think all of us who were here when Third Eye started, we were hoping for what they became. And if not, probably more than met our expectations for that place. So, celebrate with them if you can. Legislation-wise, there's only one piece, and it was the subject of the tax budget public hearing earlier this evening. That's it.
All right. Thank you. My report, thank you all for joining me in wearing blue for Men's Health Week, spotlighting men's mental health, so I appreciate that. Just a reminder that this is the only council meeting for this month, and there will be one council meeting next month on July 8th. So, keep that in mind. And that is it for my report. Clerk of Council, Ms. Buhaite.
No report.
And key auditor, Mr. Cunningham.
Good evening, everybody. I have a very uneventful report tonight, but I kind of think that's the way we like it when we're talking about expenditures. We are about 42% the way through the year, and we've spent in our general fund about 39% of it. And it looks like all other departments are well below that 42% as well. There's been no transfers to speak of in the month of May. So, that is my report.
Thank you. Treasure, Mr. Irie.
Thank you. On the opposite end of the auditor's report, we have the collections, and being 52% through the year, the general fund has actually collected 53% of revenue, of its budgeted revenue for the year. The street fund is at 68%. The fire fund is at 52%. The senior housing is at 49%, and the convention center is at 45. Income tax is also at 49%, and the convention center is the only one that's a little bit behind pace at 30, 33 or 34%. So, that's my report. Thanks.
Thank you. Law Director, Mr. Lippert.
Thank you. I have no report. If anybody has any questions, I'm happy to take them.
All right. Seeing none, thank you. Public Works Director, Mr. Bussin.
Yeah.
My report's on file with the clerk of council. Good evening.
It ain't gonna work.
Yeah, that's what I thought. That's all right. All right. Good evening. We're here tonight to talk about Public Works 2024. It will be riveting and hopefully short. Personnel-wise, we are, we actually dropped average years of service this year. We'll get to that a little bit later in the report. We're down to 13 years on average. We've got a couple of, one retirement and a couple of new hires. Overall, we stayed fairly steady in the new hires that we brought on. Like I said, we'll talk about them later, but they were, they've been good hires. So, we are fully staffed, with the exception of a part-timer, permanent part-timer. But this year, we were able to bring on two seasonals, and they have seasonal help this summer, and they've been very, very good so far. So, we're excited about that. Some equipment that we purchased this year, based on our, or purchased in 2024, based on your appropriations, we had a new chipper for our weekly chipping routes. It's gas-powered, but instead of diesel, which was a change for us. The guys have very much, have really liked it. It's lighter. It's able to go behind a smaller F-550 easier, which is a smaller truck for them to get in and out of all day, every day. So, they have very much appreciated that. We also purchased new zero-turn riding mower. We get all the exciting stuff. So, the last couple of years, I've stood up here and said that we've had very mild winters, and we're going to have one that's coming that's a little bit bigger. The 2024-2025 season was one of those that was bigger. We only had seven events, but we had a total of 18 inches of snow over those events. Two of them were, what I would say, pretty major. We had a Sunday-Mondays event, and then that Friday, we had another large event, that Sunday-to-Mondays event. Most of the crew was here sleeping overnight. They arrived on Sunday during the day, went home Monday after shift by the time they got cleaned up. But they got the job done. We used 1,350 tons of salt this year, with Princeton using 135 of those tons. Last year, for comparison, I believe we used 547 ton of salt. Our total expenditures were $137,000, almost $138,000. So, for the first time since I've been here, I've been reporting, I believe, we are over our 10-year average on snow events for the year. Lot of miles, lot of labor, lot of materials thrown down. I'm not sure if you noticed, though, as you've come in, recently, we did take delivery of salt. We are back to full capacity, ready for next year. We buy that salt early in the season to make sure that we can get it. As we get later in the season, it's not always available, and we do have ample storage. So, we appreciate the appropriations for that to keep us prepared. Recycling, the Hamilton County Residential Recycling Income Program. This year, we received $687. That's a decrease of 33% from last year. Our total recycled quantity went down, but did not go down by that much. I suspect that the overall pool was thinned out by more communities taking part in the overall program. While our tonnage of recycling went down, so did our total tonnage of collected trash. So, the percentage went down, but not, it was not near a 33% decrease in our total recycled. Bone View Acres, 2024, we had a total revenue of $320,000. We renovated one full apartment. We had several other minor renovations, but we only ended up gutting and fully renovating one apartment in 2024, which was a nice change. We're starting to get caught up on those full remodels from when the units were built. So, hopefully, the restricted upkeep budget will start settling out. In 2024, we cited, put siding and gutters on all three buildings. That was very well received. It has been a great improvement to the complex up there. As of June 1st of this year, we have one vacant apartment. We have made a call on that. We have a resident that is ready to move in. We have not signed the lease yet. We have healthy waiting lists, which is good. Talking with Teesdale-Fenton, they have a target date of June 13th, so not this Friday, but next, to do a final, a second final walk-through on those apartments. They believe they have the punch list licked, and we'll start calling that waiting list to get those six apartments back online. It's been a long, arduous project to get those rebuilt, but we, I believe we are coming to the finish line finally. Some of our street maintenance repairs, capital improvements for '24, we did our annual straight line, long lines and emblems crosswalks program. We had Aramark do our long lines, ANA Safety did our emblems. We bid that out every year to three different companies on two different contracts. Sometimes the same company gets both of them, sometimes not. In '24, we had Aramark and ANA in town. The US42 Shared Use Path was materially complete in 2024. That's been a great improvement and seems to be well-used. When I'm driving back and forth, that path seems to be getting good use. So, we're excited about that. And we had a 2024 street repair program at half, just over half a million dollars. Building lands-wise, we had our community center entrance landscape. We'll have to show some pictures of these going forward, but landscape on both sides of the entrance after we did the concrete the year before. We repaved the lower parking lot on 2024 money. It went this year, but that was 2024 budget money and bid and awarded in '24. And we resealed the city hall parking lot here. He doesn't look, he doesn't like looking at, you know, some curbs and some new asphalt. But in 2024, we did, what was it? It was Hawk, Everstrough, Mulligan, Bainbridge, and Jenkins, I believe, were the streets. We do our, we did not do a 2024 curb and sidewalk program, but when we do our street programs, we go in and replace curb and sidewalk as needed on those streets and then repave. The shared use path, again, we got, it's been a great project. We had some great funding partners with that through OKI and Sorda for that project. Lower parking lot, this has been a really nice improvement for the community center. Both in the last two years, we've done the upper and the lower parking lots. That asphalt should be in good shape for a while. This year, we have programmed to replace the light poles in the parking lots to keep them updated as well. The landscaping there at the entrance to the community center. And then, as I mentioned on the first slide, some of the personnel changes. So, we have 21 full-time employees, including myself and our admin clerk. Last year, we had Randy Bernhardt, 35 and a half years with the city retire. As part of that, we brought up one of our parks maintenance personnel and hired in new parks maintenance worker. In 2025, this past May, Lori Bishop retired, and Donna Hollingsworth, who many of you probably ought to know, has moved over from code enforcement to take Donna's place. She's been in the position for about three weeks now, solo, and actually has done a very nice job filling in. Over the next five years, we have several employees that are eligible for retirement. I've been informed that Buster Graves and Mike Carlson do plan to go in 2026, and then Beech Schmoizer, Randy Elder, and Bill Slater are all in the next five to six years. I've not gotten firm dates. So, there'll be some big changes in the department. With that, we've got some new personnel already, some new faces. We've been very lucky over the last year, two years, that we've had some very good hires. Will Schroeder came on in April of '24. He had worked with us seasonally and was interested. He came on, actually, permanent part-time, had to have, needed a full-time job, left us. When a full-time position here came available, he was very interested, applied. He's been a great hire. He and Brandon Kersker, who was on the other end, Will's on one side, the young kid, Brandon's on the other end. They're both new this year, first time that they've been in a plow truck. We had one of our, one of our heaviest winters of the last four years. They had not been trained to plowing. It took them each about two hours with somebody in the seat, and they were right on it. They were excellent additions to our crew, and we hope to keep them for a long time. Keith Downs in the middle there is, came on in August. He's permanent part-time. And as I mentioned before, Donna Hollingsworth started with us here in May. So, we, it is an absolutely phenomenal crew that I have. I think sometimes I get the emails, I get the credit. Sometimes, it's not me, it's them back there doing the work. So, I definitely would not, we would not have anywhere near the streets. We would not have the city we have without them back there. So, I do appreciate all of them. I was told to stay under seven minutes, so unless there are questions, I think I did. But I'm happy to entertain any questions about 2024, about 2025, what's going on so far, or what we're looking at into the future. So...
It was 7 minutes, 45 seconds. I did time that for you.
Anna? Do you have a rebuttal?
You always time it.
You always time it.
But seriously, thank, thank you to you and your department for all the hard work you do, the late hours, the early mornings, from snow removal to special trash pickup to landscaping, mowing, whatever it is. I see you guys out there all the time. When I go, go to work, when I come home from work, they always seem to be around, and that's, that's what it's supposed to be like, to be able to see them in the community. And you can tell the changes that they make. So, thank you to you and your department.
I appreciate that. No passing of the ball. Like I said, it's not me, it's them. So, I just get to stand here and look good.
They do a wonderful job.
Thank you.
Just a quick comment. That the brewery, the next example, private, because that coincides very closely with the primary election. It was kind of a decision to watch how they work their way through it, very well, very well done. There was no disruption at all. So, very well done. Thank you.
Well, I do apologize for interrupting the senior Cinco de Mayo celebration. So, it could have been better. I'm sorry.
Hey, Steve, real quick, are they going to replace the ambeds or drop boxes that were in the parking lot?
There are not intentions to bring those back.
Thank you.
They became
A nuisance.
A problem.
Yeah.
There are not, and there are signs posted that they will not be returning. That is not a drop location.
Okay. Thank you.
On a personal note, I'd like to thank your guys, because in my backyard, we have a culvert. And every time it rains hard, there's always some guy there checking to make sure it's not backing up, back up to the little creek that goes up behind Bainbridge and all that. And I just, I think it's awesome, and they're automatically come. It's not like I have to call and say, "Did you come today?" You know? So, I'd want to thank those guys that do that.
Good. I'm glad when we tell, when we send them out to do culvert checks, they are.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
This time, are there any residents desiring to be heard before council this evening? Seeing none. Council committees, community development, Mr. Tankersley.
Yes, just a reminder, there will be a BZA meeting tomorrow in these chambers at 6:30, and after that, will be a planning commission meeting at 7. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Budget and finance and project oversight, Mr. Cook.
Thank you. There was a joint budget, finance, and project oversight meeting this evening, and I will report out at the next council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Community services, Mr. Lovett.
Good evening. I have no report this evening. I just want to make everybody aware that due to the summer schedule, we will not have a meeting in July. We will resume normal meetings in August. So, thank you.
Thank you. Honored citizens, Ms. Knight.
Oh, yes. Tonight, I'd like to honor the rec. department, the police department, and the fire department for putting on such a great touch of truck. I don't know if any of you went. I did. It was awesome. The weather did not cooperate, but everybody was flexible. Air care even came and landed, and all the kids, woo, but then they left when it started raining. But everything was great. I mean, I took my little, a four-year-old grandson, and they fingerprinted him, and it was just a good experience for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Law and public safety, Mr. Schmidt.
Yes, next, again, as you mentioned earlier, there's only one meeting in July, on the 8th. So, the law committee meeting will be on the 1st of July, 5 o'clock, administrative conference room. Thank you very much.
Thank you. This time, we'll have a rule suspension for the first and only reading of immediate effectivity for ordinance. Is ordinance a resolution? Is this ordinance a resolution? Resolution. Thank you. First and only reading for immediate effectivity of Resolution 25-R-09-E. Is there a motion for late delivery of that resolution as noted? Mr. Tankersley, thank you for the first. Thank you for the second. Mr. Cook, any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. That motion carries. There's no unfinished business this evening, so we'll move to new business. Ms. Buhaite.
Okay. First and only reading of Resolution 2025-R09-E, adopting 2026 tax budget and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. Is there a motion for Resolution 2025-R-09-E? Mr. Cox, thank you for the first. Mr. Lovett, thank you for the second. Any discussion? Seeing none. Roll call, please.
Mr. Tankersley?
Yes.
Mrs. Sharpsher?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Lovett?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mrs. Knight?
Yes.
And Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Resolution 2025-R09-E has been approved.
Thank you. At this time, are there any residents desiring to be heard before council? Nice quiet crowd this evening. All right. Thank you. Are there other Nice quiet crowd this evening. All right, thank you. Are there other matters to be heard before council this evening?
Just, I'm sorry, just real quick, I, I know we have our meeting scheduled in July, would be the third Tuesday, correct?
It's the
Or is it the second Tuesday? And I know Miss, Mrs. Sharpsher is going to be gone because of the swim team championship. I thought it was the third. It's the third.
It's the eighth.
Did you move it to the eighth? Normally, we do summer schedule on the third. And the 15th is when
I have it, it's the eighth on my calendar. We, you were on vacation the, yeah, of July. You were on vacation the following week.
Well, that was why I was asking, because I wanted to make sure that if Mrs. Sharpsher was gone, if nobody else was planning on being gone, because I know it's unusual. But
The next council meeting?
If, if the plan is to do it on our second, the plan is to do it on the eighth.
That's right here.
So July 8th.
So it must be
It must be true. That's different than what we normally do. So we must have corrected that. So you can now make it. We probably made, okay, everybody else? Never mind. I didn't say anything.
It's on the eighth.
On the eighth.
I'll be here.
Okay, well, okay. I'm going to ask again. I know a couple of you responded back to me about the Fourth of July parade, and I will not be there. I received a couple of other people, notes from them, that they will not be there. So far, I have two that said they will be there. So three, okay. Four, five, okay. So I'll go ahead and let the city know that we will have a spot there. And then, once I get the information, I'll send it out to everybody who can attend the event, and then, please do so. You can wear city gear, you can wear Sharonville gear, but you cannot wear anything with political statements on them if you're marching in city council groups. So just keep that in mind.
Now, what are you going to do if there's people running for other county elections that attend the parade?
Well, I'm only worried about our
No, they can They can march. I mean, you could, if you, if you, if you're, want to march separately from the city
Okay, okay.
Beginning.
That's what I was curious about.
Mr. Lovett?
Real quickly, I want to thank Evan and Luke, who are seasonal employees for our Rec Department. They took care of a hornet's nest at swim, swim practice. We found one in a tree. There's a hornet. And Michael asked them to take care of the hornet's nest. I don't know if that was because Michael didn't want to take care of the hornet's nest. But they did that quickly and easily, and I just want to say thank you for keeping the kids in swimsuits safe.
Could they do something about the cicadas? I'm just, I'm tired of it. Okay, thank you. You'll get on it. Appreciate it. Any other matters?
All right, seeing none. Do I have a motion for adjournments? Mr. Tankersley, thank you for the first. Ms. Sharpsher, thank you for the second. All those in favor of adjournment, say yes? Those opposed, no? Thank you. We are adjourned.